Okay, that's better. So Charlie, did you know that David left the earlier meeting? I can't hear you. I can hear somebody, but I don't, I can't hear you. Hey Ron, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
And I can hear you too, so.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Well.
I am recovering. I got the vaccine on Friday.
Oh.
And I have, on Sunday night, I developed an extraordinarily itchy rash from head to toe. It felt like I had blotches of poison ivy everywhere. So it's pretty much gone.
Did it with the, geez, so for over a day?
Overnight, which is the worst of it. All right, let's see, Charlie, can you hear me?
Can't hear you.
I can't. Hello, David.
Hello, Mayor. Good evening.
I was gonna say, David, you're looking blurry. It must be your computer, but I have the wrong glasses on.
Doesn't look blurry to me.
All right, how about now? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Mayor, maybe the explanation is, is I'm out of focus with other people's views.
Speaking, speaking, blah, 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 blah. There goes, we can hear you.
Let's just say I have the wrong glasses on. Ronald and Terry also. All right, it's seven o'clock. Um, who is calling number one?
Um, I believe that is going to be the public comment.
So we are missing Dan. All right, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one PD of the Mansfield Council to order. Um, um, Ms. Chain, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor, Osberger. I see him. Eartha Lot.
Yes.
Bruder. For Tony.
A Bruder will, Bruder will not be joining us tonight.
Right. For Tony.
And Al will be late.
Freudman.
Here.
Otzenberger.
Yeah.
Moran.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
Shaken.
Here.
Bacon.
Okay, well, welcome everybody. Um, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the December sixteenth special PD draft minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Move by Charles, they're second. Seconded by Ron. Any comments, corrections? Is there anybody who wishes to abstain? Is there anybody who wishes to vote in the negative? Then I declare that they have been adopted unanimously. Uh, then there's also the draft minutes of January eleventh. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Lot moved, is there a second? Mr. Sharon seconds, is there, are there any comments or corrections? Is there anybody who wishes to abstain? Is there anybody who wishes to vote in the negative? I declare that these opinions have also been approved. The next item on our agenda is the opportunity for the public to address the council, and I gather we have some members of the public online. Welcome, everybody. I'm very glad you've taken this opportunity. Um, uh, this new form of holding virtual meetings has meant that we have had very little public input, but, um, I'm very glad that everybody is here. Uh, and I, I welcome public comments. The rules are five minutes, state your name and address. Um, please be, um, insistent on my question. So, um, uh, Mr. Ellsworth, who is, who is here for public comment?
Um, I believe there are, um, there are a couple individuals, Barbara Malone, and then a jointly authored letter from Demani Douglas and Noah Frank, both in relation to the proposed resolution, uh, Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay, so the first person is, is who?
And then, well, there's also, um, Mary. Um, she actually reached out to us earlier. She was gonna, I guess, provide her own comments. The other, the other two were just comments that they wanted read into the, into the record.
All right, well, let's start with the person who is here in person.
Mary Lynch.
Ms. Lynch, welcome. It looks to me like you are muted.
How about now?
Hello.
Hello, we can hear.
Yep.
Hello, my name is Mary Lynch. I live at seventy-two Lorraine Drive. Um, I'm an eighth grader at Mansfield Middle School. I wrote a letter in September of two thousand twenty suggesting the change of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, I'm really thankful to the Human Rights Commission and the Board of Education, and many other people have taken this letter seriously and read it through thoughtfully. Um, I still believe strongly that we should commemorate not the conqueror, Christopher Columbus, but the indigenous people that underwent countless struggles because of him. Um, I think now that more, more than ever, now that we have so many resources available, um, you know, in this day and age, that we should recognize the other perspectives in history, um, and not just believe the victor's story as that is, who usually holds the pen. Um, I think we have to recognize the indigenous people every year who have to endure the celebration on the second Monday of October. Um, of someone who enslaved and stole from and even murdered some of their ancestors. And I think we have a town, we as a town have come so far in recognizing different perspectives that it seems odd that we should still celebrate a person who was, quite honestly, bad on the second Monday of October every year. Um, many of my classmates at the middle school feel this way, and I think it is time that we roll the ball forward as a town. Um, I don't think this means forgetting him. I think it just means recognizing that some of our perspectives of him were wrong and that we should commemorate other perspectives that we haven't seen that much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Uh, and thank you for taking the opportunity to engage with your town government. We're always welcoming young people's engagement. We're really pleased to hear it, to participate in. Um, Mr. Ellsworth, who else?
Um, aside from the, uh, the letters that we can have read into the record, I believe there's a caller, too, that might be Darren.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Could you identify yourself and, uh, go ahead if you have public comment?
Yeah, my name is Darren Mack, and I'm a student at, uh, University of Connecticut. Uh, I believe all of you know Noah Frank. I happen to be a community affairs coordinator, so I'm taking over instead in regards to, uh, town, uh, university, uh, relations and whatnot. I'm, uh, here to comment on the indigenous, uh, people, uh, testimony that, uh, Noah and, uh, my colleague, uh, Demani, uh, wrote. And, um, you know, I'm gonna keep it brief and whatnot, because I think that there are words are sufficient enough in terms of, uh, the writing. But, um, you know, this is a very important thing that the, uh, town is doing. It is one of the first steps towards reconciliation and, um, remembrance and, uh, moving forward in terms of our race relations within the, uh, country, especially during a time in which, um, race relations aren't necessarily the greatest. Um, I'm, I'm pleased and, uh, I am, uh, feeling thankful that, uh, this is, uh, that these are the steps taking, uh, the steps that are being taken forward in regards to this and whatnot. You know, we all know the story about this, and we all understand the horrible atrocities committed by the Europeans that, uh, colonized our land. And, um, I'm glad that we are, um, doing the necessary and appropriate work to, uh, rectify that. Uh, that's all that I have to, uh, say and whatnot, but, uh, thank you for your time.
And, uh, were you intending to read the letter from Noah and, uh, Damian?
Yes, I can, I can read the letter. I have it, uh, pulled up and everything. I, I'm not on the live stream just yet, so I'm just, you know, getting everything, uh, prepared on my end, but I can, uh, read the letter, uh, starting now.
All right.
Honorable, honorable counselors of the, uh, town of Mansfield, we write to you today, January twenty fifth, to express our strong report, strong support for the item, uh, HC, a resolution re-designating the, uh, second Monday in October each year to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in the town of Mansfield. We believe that the recommendations by the Mansfield Human Rights Commission are a productive step towards bringing community-wide understanding that are reflective of the time in which we live. Five hundred and ninety-two years ago, an Italian sailor from Spain crossed the Atlantic Ocean in search of riches in India. That sailor landed in the Americas and began the second wave of European visitation to the American continent and with it walked the seas with European colonization. There began the slowest segregation of the people who called the land that we now live on, host. Two hundred and forty-five years ago, and two hundred and eighty-four years after that sailor arrived, the United States of America was poor. We as Americans committed atrocities against the inhabitants of this land. We infused the ensuing genocide in the name of menace destined and ideology rooted in the superiority of the white man over indigenous people that had called America as their home for a thousand years. One hundred and fifty-two years ago, San Francisco became the first city in this country commemorated day in the name of this Italian sailor. In the years that followed, generations of policymakers in state cities and up through federal government began to dedicate the second Monday in October to remembrance of that sailor and his resulting legacy. Today, only about one percent of the US population self-identifies as a American Indian. They are incredibly undeserved, face an exorbitant twenty-five, twenty-seven percent poverty rate, and live in some of the worst conditions found throughout our country. The people indigenous to this land that we now sit, develop, across and agriculture, that beats, out beats fifty percent of the world. In thirteen days, the United States will celebrate the Super Bowl, the culminating game in the sport derived in indigenous people. Mansfield specifically belongs to the Mohegan and Nimm-Pocatry tribe. Connecticut has a role to play in the national movement and as such communities throughout the state of Connecticut and the country and, uh, have begun to reevaluate the scope of the celebration of this day. They've re-designated this holiday in honors of millions of people who lost their lives as a result of colonialist sweeping. From a student perspective, we see the re-designation of Indigenous Peoples' Day as a natural step towards creating an environment in which to create for the future. Mansfield is a community that we as students are not only ingrained within, but many of us here need connection here. In the fall of two thousand eighteen, the undergraduate student government of UConn released a joint resolution in support of UConn implementing Indigenous Peoples' Day as an official holiday. We see this effort in Mansfield as a continuation of these efforts. Five hundred and fifteen years ago, the sailors who sang this song were integrated. Each year, the population of America may be in a shrink curve. To use Macklemore's version of "Thanks These Words," they say you die twice. Once when they bury it in the grave, and the second time is the last time someone mentions their name. The town of Mansfield today has a question for it. Who should live on in the heart of the gods and the residents in this town? Whose contribution should our children continue to celebrate the day off this week? Two hundred and fifty-nine days from today is the second Monday in October. What should that day be called? And that's the, uh, letter.
Thank you very much. As you know, we'll be discussing this at a later time. Um, Mr. Ellsworth, uh, is there anybody else here from the public?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, is it your pleasure that, uh, Ms. Malone's email be read when this taken up later?
No, read it now, please.
Now?
As a contribution, as a comment from the public.
Okay. Uh, this is from Barbara Malone. Dear Town Council members, my name is Barbara Malone. I have been a Mansfield resident since two thousand nine. Address two thirty-five Baxter Road, and I am writing to provide a brief note in support of the resolution re-designing the second Monday in October each year to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in the town of Mansfield. Many of those that defend the traditional value of Columbus Day in the US cite how clear the celebration is to the Italian-American community. I immigrated in the US from Italy when I was twenty-nine years old and became a US citizen in two thousand eleven. I come from a family with an unusually high number of teachers, and I can say that still today Italians are told a very misleading story about Columbus, which may be the reason why many don't recognize him as a symbol of colonialism and racism. I have learned more about Columbus and his legacy recently after my child, a classmate of the clever Mary Lynch, came home talking about him. In their eighth grade social studies class led by Mrs. Hodgson, these children are learning about the dark side of the, quote, "discovery of America" and are gaining an appreciation that how history is told really depends on who's telling the story. These conversations prompted me to educate myself about the atrocities perpetuated by Columbus and to reach out to my relatives in Italy to learn if he is still portrayed as the courageous and trepid traveler that I remember from my school days. Even though we don't celebrate Columbus in any official capacity, it seems like he is still viewed positively, but a new understanding of the tragic truth is starting to creep into Italian culture in classrooms and will hopefully allow for more honest debates in future generations. As an Italian and an American, I would be delighted if instead of Columbus Day, our town supported a day to celebrate the culture and history of indigenous people, and therefore I fully support this resolution. Thank you, Barbara Malone.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Uh, is there anything else for public comment? Ms. Chain, I assume you are here as a member of the commission?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just didn't want to have anybody skip who had something, who was a member of the public. Um, okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Ellsworth.
Um, there's a lot of information in this report, so I'm just going to highlight, uh, a few of the items. If you have any questions on items that I don't, uh, touch on that are in the written report, feel free to ask at the end. Um, as all council members were informed over the weekend, uh, the Resident Troopers Office received intelligence from the FBI that a political group known as the Blue Blue Boys planned to organize a demonstration on Town Hall grounds, uh, yesterday, this past Sunday, as part of a series of similar events planned throughout the state on the same, uh, day and time. The Resident Troopers Office coordinated very closely with other divisions of the state police and other law enforcement entities as appropriate. Um, in the interest of public safety, we, we did, uh, delay the opening of the community center yesterday uh, for the duration of planned protest. Ultimately, um, no demonstration took place, but I did wanna extend a thank you on behalf of the town, uh, very much, uh, very much appreciation to the Resident Troopers Office and other law enforcement agencies that were coordinating with this, uh, Resident Troopers Office to make sure that, um, had a demonstration take place, that, uh, public safety obviously would have been maintained throughout. Um, other items, the, that, um, I attended the Connecticut Council of Small Towns Annual Meeting last week. Uh, speakers included Governor Lamont and Senator Blumenthal and a variety of leaders on, on both sides of the political aisle within the state legislature. Um, I also participated in a meeting of the Connecticut City and Town Managers Association. Um, that was held on the twenty-first. Topics discussed at that meeting included law enforcement usage of body cameras and other devices intended to promote and ensure accountability. Um, and on a similar theme in terms of, um, policy and legislative developments, um, later this week, Thursday, um, I've been invited, as well as the mayor and deputy mayor, uh, were invited to take part in a discussion, uh, with our state representatives and state senator regarding, uh, both, um, sort of forecasting the upcoming biennial budget, as well as discuss, uh, issues facing the town and how, uh, the state legislature might be able to, um, to help address certain challenges and concerns that are facing our municipality and other municipalities across the state. Um, state progress continues to be made with the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget development process. Um, I believe we've held seven meetings now with, uh, department heads, individual department heads to review their operating and capital budget requests. Uh, so we're a little past the halfway point. The remainder of department meetings will be taking place, uh, this week and, and early next. Those have all been very fruitful discussions, and I'm happy to say that, uh, really to a person, um, everybody's initial requests are, are very pragmatic. Um, in some cases, they are, uh, looking to expand upon, excuse me, services currently being provided. Um, but they are pragmatic, pragmatic and certainly reflect, uh, the budgetary realities that we are confronting today. The inaugural issue of a new bimonthly electronic newsletter is currently in development. Um, our targeted publication date is next Monday, February first. Um, the newsletter is gonna be posted on a variety of locations, as well as distributed via email and shared on social media. Uh, so be on the lookout for that. Uh, one of my priorities, uh, is ongoing enhancement of the town's official website and our social media presence. Uh, while, um, we can expect that a, a pretty substantive overhaul, both substance and style, um, to the town's website will be, uh, playing out in the weeks and months ahead. Uh, one of the low-hanging fruit that I did want to, um, act on is an interest of, you know, I, I guess you could say promoting a spirit of accessibility and putting kind of a human face, uh, on, on the people that work for the town and help lead the town. Um, we're gonna be adding department head profiles to the website. So basically, when you go to a respective department's, uh, webpage, um, somewhere there in an accessible place, so you can expect to find a headshot for department head and a couple paragraphs of information. Some of that will include, uh, the nature of their position, so what the department's responsible for, what they're responsible for, but also a little bit more of information about what their background is, and then a personal anecdote, which, you know, in some cases might be something like what they enjoy most about working for the, the town of Mansfield. And so, um, that's in process now. And on both the newsletter front and the, the department head biographical information front, I wanna thank our new communication specialist, Margaret Chady, who's, uh, helping to, kinda serves as a staff lead on all that. Um, it's been some years, uh, my understanding anyway, it's been some years since the town council held, uh, a goal setting or a goal prioritization retreat. Um, and in the past, that's included, um, staff, myself, but also, um, I think in some cases, uh, senior staff like department heads. And, um, I had a brief conversation, uh, both with the mayor and deputy mayor about my interest in organizing something like this in the near future. Um, given where we are in the budget season, um, I think it would make most sense to, to, if the council as a whole is interested in doing this, look to take it on, um, shortly after the, the start of the new fiscal year. So we would be looking to, uh, as needed, put a couple dollars in the budget to help, um, you know, provide a, a budget for this process. Um, but it wouldn't actually take place until after town meeting or after a new budget is set and shortly after the start of the new fiscal year. And, um, one of the things, uh, we can, you know, discuss and will discuss at a later date are some thoughts and ideas, tentative plans, I guess you could say, um, that I have or interests I have in department-level strategic planning. And so the way I envision this playing out is concurrent with strategic planning that the departments are engaging in. Um, would be a great time for the council to do its own retreat and goal-setting prioritization uh, to make sure that the, the direction that we're headed, that everything is in relative alignment. Um, so this will be, uh, put on a future agenda to be discussed, you know, um, you know, under new businesses as its own agenda item as, um, more meat is put on the proverbial bone. Um, but I just wanted to introduce the concept to the full council, as I've had an opportunity to talk with a few of you individually about, um, my belief in the value of, of a goal-setting and prioritization, uh, exercise. Um, on the, uh, the finance side, I do wanna provide a brief update on our health insurance. Uh, the initial review of the subscriber listings for the town of Mansfield and the respective contributing agencies shows that the projected annual cost for health insurance is low over eight million dollars. Uh, this represents an approximately eighteen percent increase, um, in our insurances across the entire book. Um, as of the end of the last fiscal year, six June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, our medical insurance fund had a fund balance of a little over five million dollars. Um, this past week, um, both school superintendents, finance personnel, and myself met to discuss, um, our health insurance situation and look ahead to, to next year, and, and I reached a determination of where we thought we should go from here. Um, at that meeting, uh, we ultimately concluded that, um, it was, um, the best balance, if you will, to utilize, um, um, roughly nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance in the medical insurance fund to stabilize the rates, uh, the rates both being paid by the employer and the employee. Um, again, that would have been an eighteen percent, roughly eighteen percent increase in premiums. Uh, using, um, that amount of fund balance that I just laid out, uh, would reduce the premium increase to ten percent. So it's still a significant increase, um, but helps, um, um, smooth that out a little bit so it's not quite such a dramatic hit on employees. Uh, we did discuss, um, other scenarios to reduce that, the, the premium increase to employees further, um, but this, uh, appeared to be, you know, a, a reasonable compromise, if you will, uh, trying to find that, that right balance. Um, I think that is just, oh, sorry, Mr. Page here. Um, the, uh, I wanna point out that the libraries had great success thus far in the early going uh, with the, uh, thirty-minute browsing appointments that they recently, uh, launched. Uh, every day has been booked up, so it appears that our patrons, uh, were quite literally ready to beat the door down and come in and, and reconnect with the library and do that in a, in a safe, COVID-responsible way, if you will. Um, I know my own family is looking forward to scheduling an, an appointment someday soon. Uh, I've had the opportunity to, uh, tour the facilities, but, um, my own young kids who absolutely love the library haven't had a chance to do so and look forward to getting them in there and, 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 um, showing them what it has to offer. It's, it's, it's a great, great facility for sure. Um, with respect to the town clerk, town clerk's office will be closed on Tuesday and Wednesday this week, um, so the next couple days. Uh, from nine AM to noon for required staff certification training, and the town clerk and staff will be onsite at the conclusion of their training to perform, uh, necessary work the remainder of the day. Um, quick public works update. Uh, the downtown loop closure walkway project, um, as I understand it, this is a project that the state's already approved, uh, for funding. Um, I believe up to eighty percent of two million dollars worth of, of work. Um, the project is made up of two interconnected locations that lack an off-road multi-use trail. Location one is a proposed multi-use trail. Location one is a proposed multi-use trail from the existing five-foot sidewalk at the Maple Road intersection along South Eagleville Road, connecting to the existing eight-foot multi-use trail at the intersection of Separatist Road. Location two is a proposed multi-use trail starting at the terminus of an existing eight-foot multi-use trail at the intersection of Separatist Road and Hunting Lodge Road, traveling along the edge of Hunting Lodge Road and terminating at the four-way intersection with North Eagleville Road. Although DOT has not yet approved project funding, DPW is moving forward with design and plans, and the department expects funding within the next month, which will allow us to move forward and contract a survey firm for the work. Town has had preliminary design work reviewed by DOT contractor, and they're already conducting environmental and historic reviews. So basically trying to connect parts of town that are otherwise currently disconnected. And that concludes that which I thought was most worthwhile to share tonight. The rest is in your written report, and if you have any questions, happy to, happy to field them.
I'm going to start with a question, then I'll turn it over to council members. Why has our insurance coverage gone up by 18%?
Well, I think obviously claims history drives a lot of this. Some of it's, you know, changes within the industry. But I think what we're seeing, I guess, is relatively common and being experienced by a lot of municipalities right now. So I don't think our experience is really, unfortunately, you know, and I look at it, it's not out of whack with what other municipalities are experiencing.
Okay, I saw Ms. Burgwatt and Mr. Katschberg's answer.
I have a couple points, and one will be a follow-up to the mayor's question. But first off, wow, that's a lot of information. And two, to say how fantastic how that you all are working so proactively on so many fronts. Will to hear about the movement in terms of communications, love the idea of the newsletter going out and the headshots and shots is really terrific. And I'm really excited that we're being proactive, reaching out to seniors. There have been a lot of reports that our most fragile population is struggling with the VAM system, and it's great to hear that our town is in front of that. I note that we're reaching out by telephone and in writing, which is terrific, to identify seniors. I'm wondering if community members are aware of seniors who may need assistance. How should they go about reaching the town to make sure they're on the identified list?
Sure. And actually, thanks for bringing that up, Carrie. One of the things I meant to mention, to very honest in my report, was that while there's a lot in the report about what we're doing right now on the COVID-19, trying to help seniors get vaccinated, that I was going to let that conversation play out during Rob's time block after mine. And I know Pat Schneider, Director of Human Services, is going to be on RISD on to talk a little bit about the senior center staffer doing. But perhaps since we've already kind of opened the doors to that, I would invite Rob or Pat to maybe address your specific question about how best to utilize those volunteers.
I'm here, I can certainly address what we're doing at the senior center. We have actually, we have a fairly large database of people that are in our program that we can sort out by age. So we've identified 200 to 300 people through our MySeniorCenter.com system that we can make direct contact with. We also have a pretty large, we have, in the different service areas, we have, and it's been growing, especially since the pandemic, where people are looking for opportunities, we have a fairly large list served in four areas in town that we are pushing all of the COVID information out through and our senior newsletter. We also have been making contact with agencies that serve seniors and housing complexes and that as well. And our new outreach social worker is helping people literally access the VAM system and make arrangements. The Health District has been proactive too, and I'm certain Rob can talk about that. But transportation is another issue, and we have also been using our driver, quite frankly, to help people coordinate transportation for both testing and to get their vaccines, you know, as possible. And we've been strategizing how we can maximize that as well. So those are kind of the areas that we're, you know, really trying to case find people in this situation. We also have access to technology at the center, and we are setting up appointments with people if they need assistance with the system. So we are being very proactive. Any questions?
Thank you for that.
Yeah, we'll have more as the evening goes on, I'm sure. Mr. Katschberg, followed by just.
Thank you, Mayor. And the question's already been partly answered, but I was going to ask about the health insurance expenses. You said municipalities are seeing similar increases. Do we have a sense of where, you know, the 18% falls? Is this, you know, where do we rank? Is this the norm above or below?
I don't recall the specific, general information like that was presented from the finance team during the discussion. I don't have that available on my fingertips, Peter, but I would be happy to coordinate with staff and bring that back to you at the next council meeting, if that was your wish.
That's fine, thank you. I've got a question.
At the next finance committee meeting, the finance committee has been very much involved in monitoring the health insurance.
Yeah, we've talked quite a bit about that. Also, what, is there a rough estimate of how much this, you know, the 10% increase will mean? I know it depends on family size and other aspects, but you may not have that information now.
I do, I don't have it in front of me, but I think I can recall that piece of it. I believe if you took a family plan, which is the biggest hit, that's the biggest, you know, yeah, larger plans, so the sort of impact is proportionally a little greater. I believe it's roughly between $500 and $600 for the year. So if you divide that by 26, you know, you get a per-pay period amount. But I believe it's $500 to $600 additional premiums that that family would be responsible for over the course of the year. So if the full 18%, look at it a different way, if the full 18% were passed on, if that wasn't, if fund balance wasn't used to reduce that to about 10%, I think it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of like $900.
Okay. That's very helpful, thank you.
Mr. Shaker.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I think I have some questions about some of the COVID stuff when we get to that part of the agenda. I just wanted to echo my, echo what you said, Ryan, our thanks to Sergeant Timmy and folks from both the resident troopers office and the Connecticut State Police for addressing what could have been a, you know, a serious security threat at town hall. And I appreciate that, you know, closing down a facility for half a day is a decision we don't usually take lightly. And so I appreciate folks from town being understanding that the community center was closed on Sunday morning. Something I was very surprised to see in my email Saturday night about what was expected to happen, I'm glad nothing happened. And again, just echo my thanks to the state police for being so on top of, you know, the intelligence that they received from the counterterrorism investigation that's happening across the country. Thanks.
Does anybody else have comments or questions on the town managers' report? It would say we have talked about a newsletter for a very long time, and I'm really glad to see that we finally have somebody who has the time, energy, and knowledge to do it. Okay, next item is the reports and comments of council members. I have two. I attended the advanced CT meeting last week, in which a number of issues were raised. They were talking about marketing our Opportunity Zone properties. There will be a new magazine coming out, which will have site collection information on our properties that we don't have to pay for, as well as town profiles, which we need to take a look at to make sure that ours actually reflects our community. The other thing that was most interesting was a real discussion of introducing 5G networks. There's a program called Municipal Game, which I will ask JD to talk about at some point, having to do with the municipality's ability to contract for or even to build a 5G network. The information that was provided makes this sound like a very interesting project and probably essential for any kind of economic development. The amount of data that can be transmitted on these networks is literally billions of times more than was able to be transmitted a decade, nearly, just a decade ago. So at some point, this is something we're going to have to think about as part of our economic development process. The other thing you'll see at the bottom in our reports and comments, as a member of CCM, I had a number of conversations with some other towns, particularly with New Haven where this is being spearheaded, about the need to increase the proportion of pilot funds that was being funded. At the moment, we're getting about 30% of value out of our pilot funds. New Haven has, Senator Martin Looney is proposing legislation that will increase that percentage to 50% for those communities which are particularly impacted by high percentages of non-taxable profit. So that puts us in the category of wins or locks, you know, with the airport, but also and more importantly, with New Haven, Hartford, and other distressed communities. When we have gone to the Capitol asking for funding, we've always said Mansfield was special, Mansfield was special, and we are special. And we do need this money to provide our services, but there are other communities which are in even greater need of this funding. So I was asked if I would put the town's, if I would put my name on the letter. This has been a project that we have supported for many years, and I did, and you will see the letter in communications at the bottom of the screen. Does anybody else have any report or comment? Mr. Freudman.
Yes, Mayor, I feel it's like this is a strange kind of report. I almost don't feel like giving it, but I have to, even though it may sound a bit personal. And I do apologize for that. I try to bring, you know, always bring substantive things, and this is not in that category, except it is substantive in another way. I was at the Personnel Committee meeting today, and, you know, we were discussing, as you knows, on the agenda, the idea of a consent agenda. And I circulated some information which the council has, and I expect the public will have it soon, perhaps as a communication in the next council packet. Some ideas that if you do add a consent agenda, ideas like let's guarantee and clarify that there would be an opportunity to take things out of that agenda. And I had some other ideas like having due process, participant in the meeting, having due process if he or she is accused of violating decorum. And there was one other. I think it meant equal time to each party when we're having a debate. And I have to say to my deep regret, I was not denied the opportunity to speak. It was rarely had I been in a meeting where the chair treated a voting member of a meeting with such contempt, such hostility, and such aggression. At one point, the chair of the Personnel Committee, Councilor Burfala, said, "Well, the only way you can talk is if you have a question of staff, no comment." I don't want to elaborate, but I will just get to the point and why I'm bringing what seems like a personal problem now. It is, the situation is untenable, and the atmosphere is unacceptable and unbecoming a standing committee of the town council. So just to get to the point, I would strongly ask the, ask the mayor to strongly consider, seriously consider assigning Councilor Ron Schuren the title of being chair of that committee. Understand that I don't believe that Councilor Schuren and I agree on policy any more than Councilor Burfala and I do. But Mr. Schuren is a man of even temperament, and I am absolutely convinced, despite our policy differences, he would be a much more appropriate chairperson for Personnel Committee. But just to repeat myself, the situation in that committee, the aggression, is untenable. Thank you. And again, I don't mean to bring something that sounds personal, but it's impossible to bring an opposing viewpoint to that committee and do my job as a councilor of that committee. It's near impossible. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe that all of us saw your memo regarding your proposals on a consent agenda, if it were to be accepted. Is anybody else who wishes to make a comment or a report? Okay, then we can go on to the next item on agenda, which is our COVID-19 update. Mr. Miller and Mr. Alesworth and Ms. Schneider, I don't know how you want to handle this.
Well, I think, I know we took things a little bit out of order here, but I guess the only thing that I want to make sure that I do share with the group, and if anything else comes to mind while Rob's talking, I'll interject, but one thing, and it wasn't included in my report, but it's, I think, a very positive outcome, if you will, is Rob had indicated that one of the things, one of the challenges that he was confronting logistically as far as the multi-doses of the vaccine was when somebody gets that first shot, that 28-day, you know, turnaround for the next one, and when, as I understand it, the process that he believes that works most effectively is immediately after the individual, an individual is administered the first shot of the vaccine while they're in that sort of waiting or recovery area, they take the opportunity to schedule their next round of the vaccine. And so one of the issues that we were running into was when somebody wanted to do that, not having a long-term, a relatively long-term commitment of the community center for a vaccination site was making it such that people would have to, you know, get that shot and then leave and schedule a later date. And then you always run the risk that something falls through or, you know, somebody isn't getting that scheduling done. So I did meet with, once this was brought to my attention, I met with J. O'Keefe today, and we had a very productive conversation. And the community center will continue to be used for vaccines through the end of May and into June. I know the higher volume vaccination day, that's going to be moving over to Eosmith, as Rob has indicated in the past, recent past. But on other days where the Mansfield Community Center has been used for vaccinations, it will continue to be. And so he has now a longer-term commitment that will hopefully facilitate and remove barriers to that immediate scheduling of the second dose. So I just want to say I think that worked out well, and I think Rob hopefully got what he needed. And this is why we just need to communicate, because it's not always clear, you know, what challenge, you know, each entity is facing. We want to make sure that we're pulling in the same direction. This is obviously a very, you know, serious issue. The gravity of the situation is significant, and we want to all work together to make sure our citizens are getting what they need. So with that, I guess I would turn things over to Rob.
Thank you, Ryan. And yes, thank you for providing that longer-term commitment. It will make a material difference in our ability to plan appropriately and then therefore be more efficient with our administration of the clinics moving forward. So we, so Health District, thanks you very much for that. So I got just a list, a relatively, you know, I'm not going to say short list, but a list of items I just want to touch on. And then, of course, I'll end with what I'm sure is first and foremost on many people's minds, that. and foremost on many people's minds, that is the vaccination campaign. So COVID testing, as you know, regular weekly events at Mansfield Middle School. I have arranged for those to continue through February. To date, to date, the site's doing about 800 or 900 specimens a month. University of Connecticut, we started back up with our regular Wednesday afternoon check-in meetings with the university officials and with the State Department of Health officials. I think we're all, at this point, familiar with the university's startup plan, and it has, they're fully engaged in the implementation of that for this new spring semester. One thing that was maybe a little bit different that this body may not be aware of, that was embedded in the state health department's recommendation for higher education, State of Connecticut, was that in addition to all on-campus weekly testing, that would also occur for all off-campus student residents, and in this case, it's about 1,600 students off-campus who are now being targeted for weekly surveillance testing along with the on-campus ones. I did also want to just talk about the recent uptick in our, in our Medical Reserve Corps Unit recruitment. We've, recent efforts by the Governor and also just the general awareness of the population that there continues to be a need for volunteers. And also, there was a very favorable article in the Chronicle last week supporting the notion of volunteerism for the Health District and other local health departments to support our vaccine campaign. And to date, we, I think we've almost, we're well over 100, and I think that we've, I think we've got another 40 or 50 in the hopper that we're going to have to, we're in the process, various stages of the vetting process right now. For those out there that may be interested in volunteering for the Eastern Highlands Health District Medical Reserve Corps Unit, I would direct you to the Health District website at www.ehhd.org. There you'll see a link near the bottom of the landing page, which will direct you to the state website for registration as a Medical Reserve Corps volunteer. I think a kind of important piece of that is, once you get into that form, it's important to click on Eastern Highlands Medical Reserve Corps, Eastern Highlands MRC. That's the affiliation that they'll ask you to identify once you fill that form, and that will get you directly within our roster here at the local level, and which subsequently you will receive an email from our MRC unit coordinator, Cecily Sarasso, on what your next steps are to become a fully-fledged member. So finally, I'm going to finally talk with respect to the COVID-19 vaccination campaign. The Health District's administered about 1,100 doses to date, and I think, I think at this point, 15 different separate clinics, all of which have been held at the Mansfield Community Center. We're doing about four to five clinics a week. Our current schedule is three smaller clinics on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and two larger ones on Thursdays and Fridays, starting first week in February, next week. Yep, next week. That schedule is going to be changing. We're going to be doing a larger-scale clinic one day a week, which will be at the Eosmith Gymnasium, and then we'll be doing four smaller-scale clinics on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in Mansfield Community Center Arts and Crafts and Teen Center rooms. As everybody knows, the eligible, eligible persons currently are any personnel which fall under the Phase 1A category or individuals 75 years or older. The current timeline that the Governor has announced for future rollout of the Phase is that the next sub-prioritization group will be those 65 to 74. They're anticipating, depending on the availability of vaccine, that that may start sometime in February, probably the second half of February, and then sometime after that, in March, they're looking at other, other sub-prioritization groups in the Phase 1B category. Phase 1B is a very large category. It, you've probably read in the paper, it's 1.4 million people in the State of Connecticut. We're going to be in Phase 1B for many months, depending on availability of the vaccine, probably easily into the summer. Group put and logistics and administration of the clinics are being driven by a system called the Vaccine Administrative Management System, VAMs, probably an acronym many of us have heard by now. It's cumbersome, and it's a bit challenging. I mean, there are some definite benefits to it in that it really controls the flow and the volume, which makes, in this day of COVID, it really helps to manage any potential crowds or long lines. But as we all know by now, it's a digital platform and can be certainly very challenging for certain, certain segments of our population, the least of which, certainly, certainly the least of, not which is the, our senior population. And I'll talk a little bit about that and just a little bit more about that in just a moment. We are working with, my office is working with state and regional partners to identify sites for much larger mass vaccination facilities. You know, you know, Eastern Highlands Health District is looking at about 600 doses a week, based on our current capacities and available resources, maybe a little bit more than that, once we get into it and get a, and we're able to tweak things to improve efficiency. But remember, it's a two-dose series, so that means 300 doses of first doses and 300 doses of second doses every week. Obviously, that's, Eastern Highlands Health District isn't going to get very far very fast in making a dent on our current population. So we're going to be, we're going to be heavily dependent on ensuring that everybody has vaccine when it's available on these larger regional locations. We're currently working with Hartford Healthcare to look for a site in Wyndham, and we're also working with Trinity Health to look for a site in the Vernon-Rockville area. We're also working with University of Connecticut, got a meeting with them on Thursday, and UConn Health, possibly identifying a site in the University of Connecticut storage area. So those are all, those are all actively in the works. I think that I'm hopeful, I still have to loop back with these groups to figure out what the current timeframe is, but the last time I spoke with them, we were talking about possibly starting this up sometime, these large mass vaccination sites sometime, sometime in February. The initial goal is, you know, over 500 doses a day, maybe six to seven days a week at these sites. That's the initial stated goal from, from these officials I spoke with at this point in time. And then lastly, lastly, I just want to touch on the issue of access to vaccine for our senior population. The Health District did host a meeting of all our senior service agencies and human service agencies within the Health District early last week, of which Mansfield, Mansfield staff participated, in which my agency, I outlined the barriers and challenges that confront our seniors, and, and kind of a starting point of some ideas on what could be used and mobilized to help overcome some of these barriers. Make no mistake, the VAM system is complicated, it's challenging, and there's really no wholesale way of adequately serving our senior population. It's unfortunately a very one-on-one retail approach to this, to this, to this challenge. I am aware that the state is working hard on rolling out improved statewide mechanisms to improve access for seniors, one of which is the Vaccine Access Line. Currently, there is a number, the state, that seniors can call the state, but as we know, that line is overwhelmed currently and with long wait line, with long wait times. They're also working feverishly to ramp up and roll up, roll out, ramp up a two-on-one feature, two-on-one access, which will also have a capability of making appointments over the phone, but it's going to be a little bit of time before those kind of over-the-phone resources are launched with enough resources for them to be reasonably viable for senior population. It is happening, going to happen, but it may take, but it may take some time. And I think with that, I'll open it up. Any questions?
Mr. Schuren, Paul, and Mr. Shaker, it sounds like, wait, Mr. Schuren, Mr. Miller, would you discuss the issue that you encountered on Friday evening?
Sure.
Mr. Schuren?
Yeah, just been hearing on the news as late as this evening, unexpected shortages in the number of vaccines that, from federal government to the states to localities. Has that been your experience is one question. Second, do you have mechanisms such to assure that nothing goes to waste, that if people don't make their appointment, you get backup people filling in? We're not letting any vaccines go to waste, is my question. So we've, we're five weeks into this, so we've had, so we've ordered, you know, we're placing weekly orders for what we think we can handle in the coming week, and on two of those five occasions, our order has been materially reduced. So yes, we're definitely seeing some shortages. We haven't seen a shortage with the last order, and the state is telling us that, that they're working to create a more stable supply for us so that we can be reliably assured of a minimum allocation from week to week. So that's what they've told us, and we'll, and we'll see how it goes. As far as wastage, so a couple of points there. In terms of, in terms of filling appointments, that, for first appointment clinics, has not been a problem. Our first appointment clinics have filled up pretty quickly, pretty quickly. Our second point, our second dose of clinics, which we just started this week for the first time, and so it's a new experience for us, we're kind of, kind of working out the kinks, did have some available appointments, and so we're managing that. We're working to fill those appointments again with second-dose individuals. These are, this is, this is vaccine, which is specifically allocated for second dose. And so our charge is to get patients which, which we administered our first dose to, to these clinics. And this is the fact that we haven't filled all those appointments out is an artifact of the fact that we weren't really sure where our clinic was going to be this time around, and that's that long-term planning piece we spoke to earlier today. So, so longer term, we shouldn't have this problem with filling second dose of clinic, second dose clinics. With respect to your specific question of wastage, now, we work very hard, this stuff is like gold, and, and, and to that point, Madam Mayor asked me to share our experience with last Friday's clinic, which is an example of what is effectively a scramble, pretty much all of, a number of our, at the end of many of our clinics, to make sure that we're not wasting any doses. And the reason this is an issue is because Moderna vaccine comes in a 10-dose vial. If you tap a vial for one dose, you have to use the other nine within six hours or throw it away. And so, so we're at the end, near the end of every clinic, trying to determine, okay, how many more patients are we expecting, and how many doses do we think we're going to have left over? Because inevitably, there's a few no-shows, or on occasion, we actually draw an extra dose out of, out of a vial. And so, so what we've, we've developed what we call a short list of on-call seniors. This past Friday, we actually had six extra doses when we were nearing the end of the clinic, which is the most, quite frankly, we've ever had in any of our clinics. It's usually one, two, maybe three, but six was a, was a bigger number that we're usually used to. So we went through our short list of on-call personnel and were, and weren't able to identify, we identified three people off of that list, but we still had three more. And so it comes down to calling who you know. And so, as it turns out, I know the Mayor, and I know she's trying to get in, so I called her, and she said, "Sure, I'll get a vaccine." But we also called others, the, from the local area, and were able to pull them in last minute and get them, and get them into the system, get them vaccinated. But for those last six doses, it took 90 minutes, those last six minutes doses to get it done. And that's, and that's, and that's, in terms of, in terms of staffing, is problematic. It's really hard on the staff. And so we, so we're working hard to come up with a longer list of individ, of eligible individuals which can be available on short notice and can respond and come to our clinics. One of the things we're doing now, and certainly Mansfield path staff has done this, is identifying a point of contact for each one of our senior service agencies, who is maintaining a short list of on-call seniors, so that when they get a call from us, they can run down their own list, give them a call, and see if the senior's ready and can be in the Mansfield Community Center in a half hour or so. And, and to date, that's worked reasonably well. Until this past Friday, we had a few extra doses, and we had to scramble longer to make it happen. But the bottom line is, no, we're not, we're not wasting any doses.
Mr. Shaker? Thanks. I guess, I guess I want to talk about sort of longer term and then also short term with access to seniors when it comes to vaccination. So first, first of all, I just say, you know, what is obvious, which Rob is very kind to not say, you know, this has been a, so far, a campaign of missteps by the federal government, certainly, and frankly, by higher state government, the idea that we would start with a population over 75 and rely on them to navigate. One of the more complicated technological systems I've seen in, in technology in recent memory is, it's shocking, given that we have nine months to prepare for the eventuality of a vaccine coming online roughly around now. And frankly, the reality that the federal government has, has well over-promised the supply available at least to date. This was the blast, this was, this past weekend was the first weekend we vaccinated in the United States of America, which if we're going to somehow vaccinate several hundred million people by the summer, we're going to need to be operating more than nine to five Mondays from Friday. So I think to that end, Rob, when you start thinking about how this Health District in particular is going to stand up max vaccination sites, I just want to add my encouragement to, to think as creatively as you can about the resources that you might need to stand up vaccination sites that are open when people who aren't working, who are working can get to them easily, maybe before your colleagues around the state are doing it, and then to come to us, certainly as your largest member town, and ask us to organize the other municipal governments to come up with resources even temporarily to make it happen, so that we can do, you know, the best job in the, in the state. I just, I have grandparents who are in their, in their upper 80s, and helping them navigate the system between me and my parents has been a significant challenge, and it's only going to get worse if the system isn't fixed and we start really ramping up dosages. So just sort of a word of encouragement about that. And also, as we work with the university, I think we would be, we would be missing a giant opportunity to, if the university ended up standing up vaccination programs that were in-slaw to the university committee and their community. And so I hope that your conversations with them are about using resources in, in personnel and location-wise on campus to vaccinate the general public when the time comes for 1B to begin in earnest, and then 1C, and then 2, and, you know, then everybody.
Oh, well, just quickly, it Oh, well, just quickly, conversations with the university, the objective is to provide a community-wide vaccination location.
I'm the senior population specifically. I know Pat is still here, just to go back to the conversation that, or the update that Pat gave to Terry's question earlier. By my rough count, there's about 1,000 people over the age of 75 in Mansfield, and that's inclusive of the population at Mansfield Nursing and Rehabilitation who are being covered under that facility. That's just a rough number. You mentioned about 250 people in the senior centers database. Have you considered going to the registrar, pulling a list of voters over the age of 75, getting on the horn?
Yes, that's actually, in fact, I know that that's something that Margaret's looking at, direct Ryan.
That's correct. Those wheels are in motion. And is that something that community volunteers might be able to help with? I know there's obviously concern with, you know, going and helping a senior in person fill out an application on a computer when they, when we shouldn't be having contact, but making phone calls to seniors, is that something where the public might be able to help do something from home, help walk people through the VAM system or anything like that, or is it something where you think you have the capacity to handle in-house quickly?
Well, again, I think at this point, we have, Yamell is coordinating that over at the senior center, but all of the staff are involved. And certainly, there are some staff that, I mean, there are some seniors that are involved with the social services staff that may not have been contacted by the senior center. So we have, you know, Kathy Ann, our social worker, our adult service social worker and other staff out there. Also, you know, again, in some of the senior housing complexes and that, they have social work staff in there and other staff that are assisting. But yeah, and also the library is, is part of that plan as well, as another site and resource. We actually have, you know, the technology as well that's available and that we're letting people sign up for to come in, and then we're having assistance with that as well. So we're looking at different, you know, different ways and different avenues to do that. One of the groups that's had a particularly difficult time are people who are hearing impaired, that technology hasn't worked, and then if they've tried to call, you know, to have the telephone assistance, that's been a challenge as well. So there are a lot of challenges around the system. Like, like you said, we're doing the best that we can to offer the assistance, you know, and again, in particular, my department and the library are going to be very involved in helping people, and are involved at this point.
And I might just also chime in with, one of the other concerns that I know that's been raised, and, and, you know, I hate to even necessarily put this out there, certainly don't want to plant any ideas, as somebody said, who's not looking to do the right thing, but a concern that's been raised, because there have been reports of this, is, you know, scams and fraud. And so when you have individuals cold-calling, other individuals, if it's not somebody that they know, people are, you know, they're vulnerable right now for a variety of reasons, and then they could be, they could be subject to, if all prey to a scam, somebody calls, says, I'm calling to help you get registered for, signed up for a vaccine, and then obviously it goes a very different direction. So I've talked to Sergeant Timmy about that too, because there aren't a lot of really well-intended, you know, people with the best intentions right now, including all, you know, Pat's staff and members of volunteers that want to help get people, help them navigate this process, that's something we all want to see happen. But the more decentralized, I guess, it gets, the more opportunities there is unfortunately for, for, you know, bad-intentioned people to do that sort of thing.
So I appreciate that, that's helpful. I would just encourage, you know, if we have this population of about, you know, I don't know how many folks live in MNR, 900 or so people in town who are not covered under the vaccination program that's happened at Mansfield Nursing and Rehabilitation, that are over the age of 75, if we're in line with the state's average that was reported Friday, we've delivered first-dose vaccines to 20% of them, I don't know if we're above or below that. It strikes me that we, we need to do some outreach, and that we, and that needs to start for the people who aren't already in our various systems with a cold call, as at least an outreach tool. I mean, I'm coming at this from someone who makes phone calls, you know, 1,000 phone calls a night to remind people about the election, when it's election season time, but then coming up with some mechanism for folks who are interested but can't navigate the technology, to help get them signed up to come to the community center and get a vaccine. So I'm encouraged that you're, that you're thinking about it, I just want to encourage you to expand your networks sort of beyond what the existing municipal government networks that we have are, and start doing outreach to people who we don't know, but who need to nonetheless get vaccinated.
Terri?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I just want to say how thrilled I am that you all are thinking proactively about this very vulnerable population. And I also, I think, maybe I'm misspeaking, but I think part of the low numbers in terms of vaccination is just how fast vaccinations can be given, just at this point, sort of not having large set of volunteers, both actual medical providers and non-medical providers, and also space, which it sounds like Mr. Miller is working on. And I have to echo Mr. Ellsworth's concern about fraud, that, how quickly people can be convinced to give away important numbers that can be used for purposes of broad social security numbers, birth dates. And I'm wondering, I'm hoping that the town, in their push for COVID, is addressing that issue as well.
We're trying to. It's challenging, unfortunately, you know, as you can appreciate, Terry, a lot of the scams and fraud is perpetuated, you know, it's really hard to track these people down, and, but, you know, and it is finding the balance, because no one's suggesting that we don't want to figure out, I think it's, to use Ben's word, you know, new and innovative, creative ways to make sure that we're getting to people where they are. And so we can't afford necessarily to be so conservative, so risk-averse, that, you know, we slow this thing down, but we also want to make sure in our desire to help speed things up, that we don't make missteps and compound a problem or create another problem. And if Pat's okay with me doing this, I think it might be a good opportunity to share the phone numbers that people can call with the senior center. Yeah, so when it comes to notifying us of seniors who may be in need of help, again, either with scheduling appointments, navigating the VAM system, or even navigating, you know, transportation needs to get vaccinated, number to call is 860-487-9875. Hopefully, I said the right number, Pat. 860-487-9875, and that'll get you through to you, Neil, the outreach coordinator.
Mr. Ellsworth, thank you. That's on our webpage, in a very prominent position.
I'll make sure that it is if it's not already.
Okay, I really want to thank all of the people who are volunteering, both medical professionals and local citizens, to help with this project, because clearly it's needed, and when I lived in, on Friday, half my book club was there getting trapped, because one of the, one of the volunteers was a member of my book club. So it was, it was really, it was like old homewake. My, my personal physician gave me my personal shot. But you have warned people that there are less than possibilities for side effects, Thoromyces, and some other things, so it's a lot better than getting COVID, I will tell you that for sure. So.
One other note, Mayor, I also just wanted to, something came up, in addition, I know we mentioned the library and how people can reach out to the library for help with this, but also, I was meaning to pair this in response to Ben's question about voter registration roles. Our emergency management folks do have data too, that's helpful in terms of, you know, ages of people in various households, and so that's another means they were trying to triangulate on our 75 and over population.
Great. All right, is there anything else on this issue?
Looks like Mr. Shaken has his hand up.
Oh, Mr. Shaken.
Can I ask one other question? Rob, the students moved back last week, and they're in a period of sort of two weeks of online-only classes. Aside from their, the testing protocol that you outlined earlier, how has that gone? How, I haven't looked at their data, how is, how is the positivity rate of the students who have returned, and how, is there any spread happening on campus, know about, or off-campus among the senior population that returned?
Unfortunately, I don't have current numbers for you. I hope to have that Wednesday with my next meeting. I'm generally aware of the numbers that were prevented from coming on campus during the pre-test, pre-arrival testing, but I'm sorry, I don't have current numbers, but we can, I can get that for you.
Are they still maintaining the dashboard on their website?
My understanding is that they are, but I failed to look at it today.
Okay, can't do everything. Last call, anything else on COVID? All right, the next item on our agenda is the proclamation in honor of the 100th birthday of the verdict case in Mansfield Municipal History. I don't know how many of you are aware, there is a municipal history, but this is a cap established by state statute, and Ms. Smith was appointed by the town manager a very long time ago, as you can see from the proclamation. She has been a, we don't normally do proclamations for individuals unless they are town appointees, you know, or somebody really special, but she is one of our appointees, and she has held this title for a long time, and she's done truly yeoman service in the role. So is there somebody who would like to open the discussion by making the motion to honor her? On this first one.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm happy to do that. Move effective January 25, 2021. You authorized the mayor to issue the attached proclamation in honor of the 100th birthday of the verdict in Smith, Mansfield Municipal History.
Mr. Ellsworth. Mr. Kochenberger, second. Discussion, does anybody have anything to say about this motion? Has anybody read the history of Mansfield? Might be a really good time to distribute some of the materials that Ms. Smith has authored or co-authored on the town, because she is really one of, one of the experts on Mansfield. So is there any discussion of the motion? I understand there was a, they were thinking about organizing a parade in honor of her 100th birthday. What this normally means is a couple of fire trucks, and maybe a police car or two, and then friends and family in cars can go to her house and sort of drive around. She lives on, on, or she lives right near the historical society, so she's right on 195. So, Mr. Ellsworth, I would suggest that, in addition to the proclamation, if you get a request, that if it's, if it is possible to honor it while preserving public safety, that the town do so. Okay, so any further discussion of the proclamation? Is there anybody who wishes to abstain? Is there anybody who wishes to vote in the opposition? All right, then I will declare that this proclamation has been issued unanimously. I will be happy to sign it. I will not, however, deliver it. The last thing I want is to be the person who introduces anything to Ms. Smith, who I knew at one point, I haven't seen her in many, many years, but when I was a very young person, I worked in the library when she worked in the library at the town, so she's always been one of my favorite people in Mansfield. So thank you, everybody, and we will make sure that she receives this in time for her February birthday. The next item on our agenda is the cybersecurity update. I know that Mr. Kochenberger made the request, and I was very glad to see it, because I have also been very concerned about the recent inroads in federal, in federal governments. I know that about a year or so ago, CCM was very concerned about the inroads that had been made by hackers to municipal services, where they were holding towns and cities up for ransom, and cities had no option but to pay in many cases. So, Mr. Russell, thank you for joining us, and we look forward to hearing your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some items I'm going to go through first in the presentation, but certainly would welcome questions at the end as well. As the mayor alluded to, this is an area of growing importance. It's certainly something that we've looked at for many, many years, but with each year that passes, honestly, it's becoming more and more of a potential concern. As the mayor referenced, there are more examples of municipalities, boards of education, private entities, nonprofits and so forth, having data breaches, having ransomware and so forth. So we wanted to talk about some of the things that we're doing, and why it's become kind of an increasing focus, not only of the IT department, but as the town as a whole. We work collaboratively with all the departments, as you're going to say. So just agenda-wise tonight for my comments, I want to go over what the term cybersecurity means, I want to talk about why it's so important and why it is necessary, including for municipalities, and then we're going to spend the bulk of our time talking about what are the proactive steps that we're taking and all organizations should be taking to address this, and make you aware. So first thing, let's define what we're talking about. The term cybersecurity actually refers to three separate things. Some of these get more press than others, but all three are pretty important and are areas that we focus on. So area one is hardware, which is physical items, and it's kind of the earliest form of cybersecurity was the concern about the theft of equipment. Even before municipalities were connected to the internet, there was just concern that someone might steal items. More importantly nowadays, is there the sabotage of physical equipment, where online hackers would deliberately overload circuits. As you may know, hardware now runs almost everything inside of a facility, climate control systems, electrical systems. If you overload those circuits, you can cause the building to lose heat, for example, and cause destruction of property and so forth. We work closely, particularly with the facilities department on these items, as a lot of our climate control systems and so forth are online. The second area, which gets a lot more press, and frankly, is a larger area, is software. This has to do with the programs that someone runs. There's two areas. The first is theft of software ownership. You may see sometimes online, you'll see an advertisement, you know, get Microsoft Office for a low, low price. Typically, that's because someone has stolen the license keys from someone and is just reselling them. So we safeguard that. And an even larger area is hackers who attempted to disable programs, using things like malware viruses. These are the kind of things that get a lot of press, where perhaps you receive an email, that email has an attachment or a link, you click on it, it downloads something into your computer. Or maybe you receive a thumb drive at a conference, you put it in your computer, and infects the machine. You visit a website and download a program that you think is innocent, but in reality infects the machine. We're going to talk about how we educate staff on that and the steps we take. And then the third area, which is the area that we've seen the largest amount of growth in recent time, and is the area we're spending the most amount of time working with staff on, because it's really an emerging and is the area we're spending the most amount of time working with staff on, because it's really an emerging area that's become quite large, is cybersecurity around data. Um, this is not simply, uh, breaking hardware or software, but this is either the unauthorized use of data. For example, you might get access to a town's, um, uh, bank accounts to transfer funds. There's been some, uh, pretty sizable hacks where, uh, individuals that breached that have presented as if they were legitimate and were able to either exercise themselves a transfer of funds or get a town to accidentally transfer to the wrong account. Or the second area is disabling access to data, um, where they might not actually even be able to see your data, but they also prevent you from seeing the data. Um, the common term for this is crypto locking, where they break into your system, lock access to your data, and say, "Well, until you pay us money, you're not gonna have access to any of your information." Um, we've been focusing a lot on, on both of these, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Both to ensure we have access to data, but also that there is not unauthorized access of private information and use of data. In terms of why it's necessary, um, there are some main motivations here. The first one I wanna talk about is there are highly motivated individuals out there. Um, some of them in the United States, some of them overseas, but there are three main reasons that tend to drive these individuals. Uh, the first is finances. Frankly, there is a lot of money to be made in this area. Uh, either, as we referenced, uh, holding someone for ransom, uh, saying, "If you don't pay such and such, you're not gonna get your data back. Your system's not gonna come online." Or theft, that if someone were to steal data and resell it, if you were to get private individuals' information, you can sell it for a large amount of money. Um, second one is disruption. Um, this tends to be driven by one of two areas, either ideology, that perhaps someone is opposed to what an organization does. Maybe someone's angry at a municipality. Or sometimes it's simply based on fame, where the individual may not have an actual, uh, ideology agenda, uh, but they're doing it to kind of prove they can do it, wanna get their name out there, wanna impress others. And then the third thing, since the motivated individuals, is this idea of being the access, which we referenced earlier and we'll talk some more about, and that's wanting access to the information, that there's some information either of a confidential nature, um, or of a financial nature that they wanna get access to. Second reason why it's necessary and why it's become such a large area is technology is so prevalent now. Um, we have come a long way, um, in terms of how people use it. Specifically, there are now more devices than people. Um, it is very common and prevalent that you'll have one individual who has a tablet, a laptop, a computer at work, a cellphone that's computer, um, so there's a, a whole lot more areas that can be attacked. Um, second is how it's embedded in nearly all of our processes. Um, I still remember a time where we had some departments that used technology and some only used it a little. That is not the case anymore. Um, across the organization, it's embedded in nearly everything we do. Um, we certainly make sure that we do have paper options and that, you know, we're addressing individuals who don't have access to technology. But the reality is that citizens expect it, businesses expect it, and work processes use it. Um, third area is the speed of innovation. The amount that technology changes and continues to increase at faster rates. Um, the faster things change, the more opportunity there is for risk. Um, and the final piece, there was a time, um, where it was usually larger organizations that were targets, where it was only worth doing a hack if the organization was large enough or wealthy enough. Um, that has now changed. In many ways, smaller organizations have become a bigger target, but because they're perceived as an easier target. Um, hackers can now do that at such a low cost to them, that it's worth it to them to go against small organizations and still turn a profit or still become famous. Finally, area I wanted to talk about is what we're doing here in Mansfield, what kind of proactive efforts. Um, I'm gonna go through these. Uh, these are driven by best practice. Um, we've worked closely with the state of Connecticut primarily, uh, but we also have opportunities to work on the federal level and with partner municipalities and professional organizations such as Genus. Um, and there's some known areas that you need to focus on. First and foremost is planning. Um, in the area of planning, it's really preparing in advance. Um, we do things where we look at scenarios, we test our network, where in effect, we're the hackers, so to speak. We explore where their weakness is, we work with our partner organizations to do testing of our network. Um, we establish documentation about how we could mitigate risks and what we would do in advance. We anticipate what-if scenarios and say, "Well, if this happens, God forbid, this is what we would do." So then when the time comes, prepare. Professional development is a big part of this planning. Um, some of this professional development is DIT staff themselves, where we're making sure we're aware and on the forefront of this stuff. But frankly, a lot of it is working with staff, um, and oftentimes it's in small groups. We very frequently, uh, meet with even a couple members of the department to look at an initiative they're doing and kind of talk about how they're doing data collection, what kind of program they're using, is there a change they're gonna be making? And we talk about, you know, what kind of potential risks there could be and what kind of safeguards we'd be taking. And then finally, uh, we're very diligent about applying updates, patches, and changes to our system to make sure that we're constantly trying to address new threats. Um, a lot of this, we work closely with vendors, where we have subscriptions to updates to items. Second item is threat monitoring. We have a number of tools where we keep an eye on our network. Um, a lot of these are automated, frankly. The reality is, you know, as you can imagine, we don't have enough staff to sit there and watch the system constantly. Um, so we have systems that proactively look and report back to us and draw our attention to potential items. Uh, we also have an asset inventory system that keeps an eye on our physical items. Um, we use filter systems that keep an eye out for potential threats, block potential bothersome emails, potential websites. Um, and we work closely in partnerships. Um, some of those are, uh, IT-based, but a lot of them are, uh, driven by purpose. An example would be during the, uh, recent election process, we've worked with the Secretary of State's office, and they, their contacts at the state level kind of share information about potential risks. Um, third item is we have a number of systems and processes in place. Um, by systems, a lot of these are technology items, uh, firewall, which controls the access inside and outside of the network. As you know, we have public wireless that's robustly used to keep that isolated through firewalls. Um, a remote access system, which has been particularly important during COVID, making sure that authorized individuals can work outside of the network from home. But if there's any risk on their home network, then our internal network is protected by keeping that segmented. Um, we do a lot with backups, redundancies, controlling traffic. We wanna make sure in the event that there was a breach, um, that we have copies of that data offline on things that are not connected to the network, that would protect us against something like a crypto locker attack. Um, and then the second item is processes, where we think through how passwords work, how we grant access, how you create a user, how you remove a user, legal compliance issues, how you notify someone in the event of a breach, um, to make sure that we're being proactive. With that being said, that's kind of the overview I wanted to run through quickly, just to kind of give you a sense of, um, what we do as an entity, um, and what kind of threats we're facing. And with that being said, I wanted to, uh, open it up for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Here, Mr. Kochenberger.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Jimmy, thank you very much. This is very helpful, and I know it takes time to do and to organize and think about. Um, so thank you for doing this. Uh, just, uh, I had a couple, a number of questions, but I'll, I'll just ask one or two now. Uh, my understanding is one of the weaknesses for, you know, for any system is the, the third parties are the vendors that tap in. Because however robust our systems are, or our bank systems are, there's also vulnerability to, whether it's a taxpayer or, you know, resident trying to pay a bill, or services that we are purchasing online. What, how do you address that generally?
Yeah, no, great question. Um, some of the ways that we address that. First, um, we have processes and are very thoughtful about how much access someone has. Um, so perhaps at the lowest level, I'll give an example, perhaps a, a taxpayer who's gonna access the system simply to pay a bill or look up their bill. Um, that's an individual who we can limit very much, though, what they have for access. Uh, where they could go in, you know, get what they need, but they're not connecting to any of our internal systems. We can segment them outside of our network to prevent any risk. Um, with vendors, that's often the case as well. Some of the information we'll share with vendors, in fact, typically with vendors, we don't actually give them access to our system. Instead, we have a, a third-party location where they can upload information that we can download or, or vice versa. But if it is a vendor that does need access, uh, we use what's called a, um, SSL appliance to kind of limit what they can get into, so we can be very prescriptive in terms of, uh, perhaps if we had a vendor that was gonna work with us in a particular office. Um, we could limit it so that they have access just to the items, not only in that office specifically, but specifically just the items that they work with in that office. So, in the event that the vendor had a breach, um, that would limit the issue. Uh, we're also real thoughtful about giving vendors temporary access. Um, and we have agreements with vendors as well, but, uh, generally now it's understood among vendors that they have some responsibilities as well, in terms of notifying us if they have a concern, uh, or something's happened on their system, and also being very prescriptive of who in their organization has access. Uh, but you're right, as you've identified, um, one of the biggest risks on the cybersecurity side is when you grant access to someone. You know, it's one thing to say a, a hacker who's somewhere else out in the world who has no access and has to find a way in. When you work with a vendor or even our own staff, by necessity, they need some access. And so we try to limit it to the lowest common denominator that they need and for the lowest amount of time that they need.
Thank you. That's, that's, uh, just like very helpful. Uh, one other question, and I, I don't wanna monopolize. Um, I, I believe that you tell me, I believe we have cyber insurance now through KERMA. Um, but if, if we don't, do you think, how valuable do you think that would be? Of course, it depends on the cost and what it covers, um, but if we do have it, do you find the various loss mitigation advice, you know, procedures, training helpful?
Yeah, um, so, um, Councilman Kochenberger referenced, um, insurance in this area, which, yeah, I'm just gonna explain what that is in case there's anyone who's not familiar. Um, what you can do is in the same way you might have insurance on your house, in case your house got on fire and was damaged, you can have insurance related to, um, cybersecurity. So, for example, if you had a data breach and the breach released some private confidential information, and one of the mitigation strategies was you were gonna buy credit monitoring for, uh, say, a couple of years for anyone who was affected. Um, you could have an insurance policy where there'd be some kind of deductible, where you would have to pay a certain portion of that cost, but the insurance provider would then provide, uh, the cost above a certain amount, um, so that way the impact wouldn't be as high. Um, I believe you are correct. With KERMA, we do have insurance in a variety of areas. Um, what I can do as a follow-up, I can check in with, uh, uh, manager's office and also the human, uh, resources office in terms of how that policy currently works. We certainly do have KERMA as an insurance provider, and there are aspects related to that, uh, but I can check to find out specifically how that's currently with. Um, I would just add, just, I'm sorry, just add, Peter, I don't have a knowledge of that now.
Pardon?
I was just gonna say, I would need to research that, that further to see what our current coverage is amount to as far as the research protection.
Well, we had a presentation earlier, uh, from, uh, Service Broker. This came up, and I should remember offhand what he said, whether we have it or not, but I don't remember it either. But it's, you know, it's worth, I got, that's why I was asking the question. Uh, with it can come a host of services, you know, preventive, uh, mitigation, preventive measures, some of which can be very useful, some of which, I, I don't mean KERMA generally, but some of which sometimes can be nothing. You know, you could find it in five minutes on the web. Um, but I think KERMA generally provides pretty good information, but anyway. Well, thank you. I had, I'll, I'll, I'll pass, all right, I have a couple other points, but I wanna, I don't wanna, I'll, I'll go after anyone else. Thank you very much, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Mr. Sherrod.
Yeah, just quickly, you said in testing that we have paper backup for some of our functions. I, i- is it such that, um, should there be a disaster, not even a malicious one, a power outage or something, we're okay for our urgent needs?
Yes, um, I can speak to that. We are. What we do, one of the, um, benefits we have, partly how we address it, is because we have buildings throughout the town that are interconnected, um, one of the primary means we would address that is we have redundancy between buildings. So, say if you had a particular building that had to come offline that had certain systems, there's the ability to bring up those critical systems at another building in another part of town. Um, we also have some abilities to do that off-site through what are called cloud-hosted services, um, which we could do as well. The preference would be to do it in another building, because it would be easier, be more robust. Um, that's not all of our systems. We kind of go through and identify which are the critical ones and which are the ones that, well, you know, we'd be okay doing without for a day. Uh, but the most critical ones we do. Um, we haven't had a case yet where we've had to do that for an emergency reason. Uh, but where it sometimes comes up is if we have a facility that's gonna have work going on. Um, an example would be sometimes if you have like an asbestos abatement project, um, there's limits of who can be in what part of the building. We had that at one point with the middle school, for example, a number of years back. And so we took some of the systems in that building and moved it over into another building. That was a scheduled example, so not really a cybersecurity breach, uh, but it was a nice test of the system. And then, um, the other piece we are thoughtful about is making sure that some of those systems and data are not connected to the network. So if we had a real serious breach, we'd know there were things to, you could not get to through the network that we could, uh, bring online separately.
You know, it always amazes me, um, when we really get talking with department heads, how much work they've already done. And it's, it's really useful for us to be educated. Um, there was another hand up. Was it Mr. Sherrod? Did you have the hand up? No, Mr. Grayman.
I'd just like to follow up a little bit on what you just said. Uh, I remember about two years ago or so, there was a, a meeting and there, there was a presentation by, by Director Woffel, and it was in executive setting. And, uh, so there, there was some things that are not being presented here in open setting. And all I'll say is, it, it boggled the mind, my mind, anyway, the amount, even a little town like ours, the, the number of attacks, the frequency, the creativity of the attacks, the, how those attacks mutate. And all I'll say is this is a shout-out to our information technology department, between our director and our network administrator, and I'm sure other people in the department. Uh, they are just incredible watchdogs, because they have to be on top of constant changes, constant attacks, ones that can change weekly or monthly in their malign creativity. And they, they have to want, find ways to block them, come up with new updates to firewall, whatever it is they do. So, uh, you do a great job in that department.
Well, thank you very much, and that's very kind of you to say so, and, uh, I, I look forward to very much sharing that with my, uh, team. Thanks, thanks, though.
Any other comments or questions about cybersecurity? Mr. Kochenberger.
If no one else has a question, this is a, a follow-up. First, uh, Davis, I'm not gonna repeat Davis' comments. He said it better than I, Kurt, but I, you know, I think we all agree, um, that, you know, thank you for all this work. Second is, on medical, um, I guess we have access to reach the town and collect some medical information on people. Um, and that, of course, that's often along with, you know, bank records, but the medical information is often, you know, most highly protected as well as, you know, records that most people are, you know, very sensitive about. Uh, do we have special procedures or protections for medical records or, or, you know, making sure we don't ask for information, for example, we really don't need?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Um, there's two ways we address that. One is, uh, or actually three ways. Um, one item is there is some information that we intentionally don't put on the network. Um, some of that is medical-related. Um, sometimes it might be, uh, uh, financial-related. An example would be there's sometimes where someone's applying, say, for a grant, and there's certain financial information purposely don't make electronic. Um, the reality is there's some items, uh, medical and financial, that are so sensitive that when you put them online, you just, you, you increase the threat. First, when you keep it in a paper copy and you can lock it away and so forth, it's a better bet. So sometimes we're just intentionally not putting things on the network. Um, second way we do it is, one thing that you referenced, is, um, only asking what you need. Um, the reality is, um, there are some things that, that don't need to be asked in an electronic way. Uh, there's some medical items where, uh, you could have a verbal conversation or you don't need to know. Um, sometimes it's even simple steps as if we need to know someone's age, for example, to qualify for something. qualify for something. You don't need to ask for their birthday. You can simply ask them, are you above this age or not above this age? And that's a way to avoid having it. And then the third piece is, in the area of medical, we're real thoughtful about what vendors we use and how we handle that. Example would be with the school nurses, there's certain information they have to have because of some of the medical responsibilities they have. So we have a vendor we work with that only works with medical records related to schools, and it's very limited who has access to that system. Like an example would be, in that case with medical, I don't have access to that system. The network administrator does not have access to that system. You know, it's limited just to the nurses who have a medical requirement have access to it. So it's making sure that if we really do need to collect that highly sensitive information, it's with a vendor that specializes in that, and we limit it only to those medical people who have a necessity to get access to it.
Thank you. Mr. Krachenberger?
No, I was going to say, no, that's very helpful. Thank you for that.
Okay, one last question, Jamie, to the recent inroads into the federal government, are they recording that state and local governments yet?
Did you say that again? It cut out at one point and I missed you. Could you repeat that?
I gather my internet's a little shaky. These recent revelations of major inroads into federal agencies, and there's been hints that they've gone other places as well. Have Connecticut seen any of that?
Yeah, so what the mayor's referring to, you may have seen, late in 2020, it was learned that there was a significant breach of a number of federal agencies. There's some dispute exactly whereby there are different viewpoints about exactly who was responsible for it. I won't go into those. But it's definitely known that there were federal agencies. There were also some pretty major private vendors, Microsoft, SolarWinds, and so forth, that were also breached. Based on the information I know that we received so far, that the state has like, well, lack of a better term, a cyber command in terms of what they've shared, there's not any indication that, in the state of Connecticut's case, and not an indication in terms of Mansfield, that there's been a breach, that isn't to say there could not have been, because this is one where the initial report suggested one thing, and as further reports have come on, the amount of breach has expanded. But to date, we haven't received any information indicating that the state specifically or Mansfield specifically was involved. Given the types of systems they breached, it's, at least in terms of Mansfield, it's not likely we didn't, we happen to not use the particular products that were breached. I'm not sure on the state level if they used any of those products, though.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Then let's move on to the next item on our agenda, the Human Rights Commission update. Mr., where did you go? Mr. Matoma?
Mayor.
There you are. Hi, you're in the wrong, you changed your space on my screen, so I lost you.
Good thing, Bob.
I gather this is coming from you and from your commission. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for putting us on the agenda. I'm reporting on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, which you'll recall you all created last fall. And this is both in response to the general charge, which was given at the time of its creation, as well as a specific directive that asked the commission to provide an initial set of recommendations in January. We as a, as a commission, has spent a lot of time standing up this new body. This is, of course, the first time there's been a Human Rights Commission in the town. And I'm proud to say that all members of the commission are new to serving in a volunteer capacity for the town. So in many of our initial meetings, we spent a good deal of time organizing and orienting members to town processes, to the procedures of the Human Rights Commission, and to getting them to understand, all of us to understand the charge and the nature of promoting human rights at the, at the local level. In doing so, we created a work plan for ourselves, which is outlined in the, in the report that we've submitted, designed both to respond to the specific request of the town council as well as to pursue the broader mission of the Human Rights Commission. So that includes things like familiarizing the commission members with the overall state of equity in human rights in Mansfield, to educate members on relevant human rights standards and best practices with regard to promoting human rights, to familiarize the town, town council, boards, commissions, employees with our mission and our charge, and to familiarize town residents with the commission and its, and its mission. To do so, we identified five key activities that we're going to guide our process in fulfilling these obligations. So reviewing literature and models, reviewing town documentation, conducting interviews and discussions with different stakeholders, analyzing the findings, and providing a report. This is not that report. That report will be forthcoming as we, you know, outlined this particular mission. It was much larger than something that could be completed in a couple of months, so we anticipate an ongoing reporting out of these activities. So this is an initial set of findings and some proposed possible recommendations. The recommendations contained in the report will be elaborated on as the commission pursues its work, but it gives you a sense of the framework we're using and the approach that you can expect as we begin to identify areas of concern, areas of opportunity, and areas for growth. In general, our work, we've taken a model from the Columbia Law School in terms of promoting human rights at the local level, where they have five general strategies. They are making aspirational commitments to raising awareness for human rights, reframing local concerns as human rights issues, fostering participatory governance, reporting on local compliance with international human rights treaties, and conducting human rights-based audits and impact assessments. In each of these areas, we've identified examples from other locales and municipalities that we are continuing to examine and unpack, as well as begun to identify opportunities for Mansfield specifically to begin to take action in these areas. Those are noted again in the reports, all of which will be elaborated on in the future. We'll have additional kind of contributions to these as we move forward. Going forward, in fact, you know, our next steps include continuing our review of some of the town literature and documents, that's both existing codes and the charter as well as policies in hand. We'll look at various reports already produced with respect to relevant equity and human rights standards, and we'll continue to conduct discussions and interviews with key staff members, other stakeholders in key positions within town government, as well as with the general public. All of this obviously has been impacted by COVID and the need to remain safe in our communities, and that certainly puts a damper on our desire to get out there and build those relationships that we know are going to be really important for carrying our work forward. Our hope is to conduct these efforts for the remainder of early 2021 with a goal of producing a final report for the council in June of 2021. So I'll pause there. You have the report. If you've had a chance to look at it, if you've got questions, I'm happy to discuss any pieces right now.
Mr. Shaker.
Thanks, Glenn. This is a, it's a very interesting report, and I'm glad to see how, how sort of widespread some of the recommendations are. The report, I know there's going to be sort of details coming, coming forward, and so maybe we'll have a more, more comprehensive discussion. I'm sure we'll have a more comprehensive discussion when that time comes. Are there, have you, have you started as a commission to take a look in addition to sort of adopting some, some of these sort of assessments or best practices or other tools into sort of what are the existing, what are the existing practices that are happening, you know, around the town's hiring processes, around the town's, you know, development of policies at the town council or boards of education level of planning and zoning? Or is that in your, in the commission's view, something that sort of comes after we, we start implementing some of these, some of these tools across town government?
No, I mean, they don't come after. I think that's the, exactly the point of the next phase of the review. I think, again, these are general categories and with recommendations, more concrete recommendations will be forthcoming. You know, I think, again, one of the, one of the challenges we faced is onboarding commission members, you know, to be able to meaningfully engage with analyzing, you know, exactly those existing practices and procedures, and beginning to orient them according to the relevant human rights standards. So, you know, to be quite honest, most of our work at this point has been in the area of self-education, right? And I think that's important, you know, in order for us to kind of make informed choices about where are the strategic opportunities for us? Because you can't do everything at once. I think there's a desire to do a wide range of things. I think there's a kind of range of interests that we've had, and so I think really identifying where those, those opportunities are. Certainly, I've had conversations with Holly and with others in the, in the town that are, that are beginning to help us identify how we can be most helpful.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Other questions for Mr. Matoma on the report from the Human Rights Commission? Mr. Matoma, this, this report includes some very specific and some very general recommendations. Are you making, submitting this report as the recommendations that we adopt, or are you going to follow it up with more specifics?
No, we're not submitting this as the recommendations for town council to act on at this, at this time. So we will be following up with additional, more articulated recommendations in these various categories as our work proceeds. This is to give you a preview of the kinds of things we're seeing now, and again, the framework that we're using as we approach our work. And in the spirit of, you know, engaging you in open conversation as you're identifying your own concerns, your own opportunities, that you know how and where we might be supportive of that work.
For example, let me follow this up with a specific example. It says the Human Rights Commission recommends that the town endorse the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and other human rights instruments, i.e. the Convention on the Rights of the Child, as aspirational standards. A, I'm not sure that members of the council know what those documents include. And B, I think they probably would take our breath away with the range of obligation that the council is nowhere near willing or able to undertake. So...
Yes, so...
I think it's really important that these, some of these things be considered as part of our goal setting, but I'm not sure how to do that.
Yes, and again, we'll, we'll provide, you know, more thorough guidance when specific opportunities arise. So, you know, after this, we'll, we'll talk about our recommendation with respect to Indigenous Peoples' Day. That is more in keeping with the concrete recommendations that we'll ask for town council action on. You know, in those particular cases, there are many good examples that do range from a kind of fulsome embrace of a particular international instrument as a policy guide. So, for instance, Los Angeles has used the Convention on the Rights of the Child and asked departments to align its work with various aspects of its provisions. On the other hand, West Hartford's mayor has signed a proclamation essentially recognizing the importance of the convention as a moral standard, global moral standard, and encouraging, you know, both the general public and the town to familiarize itself with the, with the provision. So there's a variety of ways in which that kind of action can be pursued, right, with varying degrees of commitment from, from the town. So as we go forward, we'll, if we identify a clear opportunity that there would be a value added to our work overall, to have the town endorse these documents, and we believe there's likely to be, we'll provide guidance on the kind of scope and nature of such a resolution, a proclamation, or...
Okay, now, I was thinking here as myself, not as the mayor, but I have been really reluctant to adopt proclamations that have no enforcement mechanism and that will be forgotten within the next fiscal year. Proclaiming for the sake of proclaiming is, doesn't seem to be worth anything, but proposals that give us a way to actually do some implementation of a change in our own approach to human rights as a town, as a whole, i.e. it has to build the staff into it in a way that staff can in fact do, that we can ask staff to do. And that's a big, that's a big challenge because we can't, it's a policy.
I think that's, yes, and I'll just respond by saying, you know, we agree, and that's why it's important not to look at these recommendations or this report as a menu of different options, but as a comprehensive approach that integrates a variety of strategies that, taken together, are not simply symbolic, but move from a kind of educational engagement into an operationalization across the range of these recommendations. So I would agree that, I don't perceive the commission making a recommendation for the town to simply adopt and forget, you know, you know, this or that treaty, right? It would have to be part of a, you know, a broader strategy where we saw there was a clear value in doing so, and it was integrated with, you know, they're not full implementation procedures as such, but they are ways in which they move quickly from that, that symbolic gesture, which is actually important in a lot of ways, to concrete action.
Good. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just to echo, I think, what Mr. Matoma just said, often I think we need a framework for decision-making. It's not so much that we need to be told this action that should be made, but it's good to have our aspirations out there so that when we make decisions, we're thinking about the right things, and we know what our ultimate goals are, and we're framing it within the importance of recognizing and furthering human rights.
Wish to comment to this report?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Well, I think you did hear earlier, Mr. Matoma, that we are talking about sometime after budget season, talking about goals for the council. It would be very useful, I think, for us if you could have something for us to consider as part of those discussions. Knowing that part of our goals is good roads and getting vaccines to everybody, et cetera, et cetera, we also should be thinking about something that will make you, make use of your recommendations.
Absolutely. I think the, the commission would be delighted to contribute to those, those conversations, and we'll, we'll make sure that we have appropriate range of resources so that they can support you in your goal setting.
Mayor, I just want to also...
Uh, Mayor, I just want to say, I did have the opportunity to take part in the commission's meeting earlier this month, I think that was January 13th, and, um, it wasn't a scheduled appearance or anything, so I appreciated, uh, Glenn's indulgence, other members of the committee for giving me a few minutes at the beginning of the meeting to introduce myself, and, and I just want to say I was mostly in observer, you know, mode, basically for the duration of the meeting. Um, the group was hearing, the commission was hearing, um, an initial part of the meeting from Superintendent Lyman, and that was, uh, you know, very interesting to hear what's going on at the BOE level, um, on this front. Um, but I just want to applaud the commission, you know, for its work, obviously, you know, anybody who reads this report can see that a lot's been done over the past year. Um, but, um, I think every member of, of the commission is, you know, in the short time that I've done to know some of them and see their work, demonstrating, you know, a real commitment to these issues, um, but also a real willingness to consider a variety of viewpoints, and I think that's very healthy, so.
Thank you. It was great, it was great to have you, Ryan. Come by anytime.
Are we ready to move on to the recommendation? All right, the recommendation is, um, on page forty...
Forty, I think forty-one through forty-three?
Um, there's a resolution on page forty-three. Is there anybody here who would like to move that we adopt this resolution? Mr. Shaken?
Before I, before I move, I don't know, if you want to have Mr. Matoma not read, but go through sort of what the memo outlines before the resolution in front of us, or, or do you want to move straight to it?
Well, I assume that everybody got a chance to read it and that, uh, we know what the Human Rights Commission goals are, and there's been discussion of this, we've had public participation on it. I think everybody understands what the issue is, so I thought we could just move to a resolution to adopting this and then add discussion.
Okay, I was only asking because Mr. Matoma's role during debate might be, might be limited as a non-council member, so I was wondering if the commission wanted to make us aware of any of the particular facts before we get something on the table, but I'm also happy...
Well, we're willing to allow Mr. Matoma to answer questions at any time during the discussion, but Mr. Matoma, do you want to take extra time before we introduce the resolution to present it, or should we go directly to the resolution?
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer, uh, council members' questions as long as that's in order, um, you know, during your, your, your debate. So, most of what I said is in the, is in the document, so if you're, you're, you're all familiar enough, then I'm happy to respond then off of that.
Right. I will, I will allow Mr. Matoma to answer questions during the course of the debate on the resolution. Mr. Shaken?
I will be, uh, I'd be glad to, to make the motion, though.
Uh, Alis has just turned off your mic.
He sure did. Um, I, in sort of absence of, of reading it, I just, I would move that the council adopt the resolution as presented on page forty-three. On our packet.
All right, is there a second, Mr. Bruckler? Mr. Bruckler, a second. Okay, the motion is to, um, designate the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, there's, there's serious, whereas is explaining it, uh, this is, I'm saying these things for the members of the public who may not be looking at, talking, yet in front of us. Um, the, there's a resolute, the resolution, um, adopts the naming of the day, and then the resolution recommends that everybody educate themselves and create opportunities to commemorate, uh, the current historic and current presence of indigenous peoples in Mansfield. Uh, so, Mr. Shaken, would you speak to your motion?
Sure, I'd be, I'd be glad to briefly. I, I think this is a good idea, it's something that's overdue, frankly, for, for us as a council. I, I know many municipalities have, have moved this way, City Hartford and other places, and I think, uh, I think we ought to as well. I mean, in particular, one of the things that I think is often, uh, is often ignored when we think about this is, you know, what's in the name of a holiday? Um, is the, is what then happens in our school system and, and elsewhere as the community prepares to commemorate that, that day. And, and so while the holiday that town staff get off will still be the second Monday in October, and, and only the name of it will change, what will, uh, what will also change is what the town says about that holiday publicly. What will change is what students in school learn about as they prepare to understand why they have the second Monday in October off. Um, and that is the history of Mansfield, the history of the state and the country as it relates to indigenous people versus as it relates to, to a story of, of, of the European sort of discovering, if you will, America. Um, so I think that's really important, I think it has a profound impact on, uh, on what, what kids understand to be the history of the country. I know I'm talking about kids here, and the Board of Ed has already made this determination, which is sort of out of our realm, but I think it's why I support it most. Um, I could still do the rhyme, you know, in fourteen ninety-two, Columbus said, "The ocean blue," which is what I learned when I was a kid, and, uh, I didn't learn about the indigenous people who, and the impact that the colonization of, of America had on them until I was much older. And, and this simple act here, uh, creates those opportunities for, for kids today. And, uh, so I think it's a good thing, I think we ought to do it. I'm, frankly, I've been somewhat surprised as communities across the country have dealt with Christopher Columbus's legacy and, uh, and, and tried to be honest about, about his history, how much blowback there has been, um, but I, I don't think we will, we will experience that in Mansfield, at least I hope we won't, and I hope my colleagues will support it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sharon, I thought, I saw your comment?
Yeah, just to say that I, I fully support this resolution, but I think that we should encourage, as we study the history of indigenous people in and around Mansfield, just a little factoid that I came upon from the Mansfield Historical Society. According to tradition, our town was named for Major Moses Mansfield because he, quote, "routed a body of hostile Indians," unquote, in the area. Something worthy of our consideration, hasn't that all?
Would anybody else like to comment? Well, I, I think the sovereignty, you can't comment as a council member. Uh, I am an Italian, and I have wondered about Columbus as a symbol of that part of my heritage for a while. Uh, the, my ancestors who came here were a community that was discriminated against, and, um, it was a very, you know, the initial years of those migrations were, were very difficult. Um, but that community did very substantial contributions to the society, and I think the Italian community should be honored, but I don't think that Columbus is the appropriate mechanism for honoring that particular part of our heritage. And so I'm, I'm perfectly happy with the idea of renaming, uh, this holiday as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I sometimes wonder if there shouldn't be a day for Immigrants' Day, you know, because for all the peoples who came to this country, um, and who made it what it is today. Not the original discoverers, not the colonizers, not the, the genocidal, um, folks who came in and wiped out local native populations, but the people who did in fact build the factories and build the society that we know today, and the, every one of us has, has those people in our heritage. Um, but I'm not opposing that tonight. I am just saying I do support this, and I, and I explicitly want to say that this is the wrong symbol for a Tag, uh, Italian heritage. So, uh, are we ready to vote? All right. Um, Mr. Frattoni, do you wish to say something? Are you ready to vote?
I, I want to just have one comment. Um, Mayor, I agree, I agree with you. Um, of course, Frattoni, I'm Italian myself. I, um, in knowledge what they did for Christopher Columbus, the statue that they have down there was, and they sort of de-emphasized the Columbus part and, and built up the Italian heritage part. Um, so therefore I agree with, exactly with what you're saying, because, you know, there's a part of me which is, as an Italian, is like, you know, I feel like something's being pulled away. But when I read it, especially the email that I saw earlier today, um, I missed the earlier part of the meeting, I don't know if it was read into the meeting or not, um, I agree with that writer as well, um, and she was, um, an Italian, of Italian heritage. So I just, also indicating my support as well for this.
Okay. Um, do we need a long call photo? Is there anybody who wishes to abstain? Is there anybody who wishes to vote no? Thank you. This motion is adopted unanimously, including the Italians. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And, um, Mr. Matoma, will you please thank the members of your committee for bringing this to us? And, uh, and, uh, I don't know whether you will be speaking with Mary Lynch, but I really do want to thank her for her efforts in, in calling this to our attention as well.
I will let them know, and I will let her know as well. Thank you all.
Okay. Um, reports of council committees. Personnel, do you have any reports?
Yes, I do. Also, I'll be reporting for the Committee on Committees in, uh, Mr. Bruder's presence. Uh, but first on the Personnel Committee, we met earlier this evening. Uh, we learned, uh, about changes that will be made, uh, in the Finance Department, uh, a, um, realignment, uh, in terms of, of the chain of command, uh, that makes a whole lot more sense and, um, spreads out decision-making in a more rational way. Uh, it seemed like truly excellent ideas. Um, we also talked again about the, um, uh, moving to a consent agenda on, um, our agenda here at the Town Council. Uh, in a, in a upcoming Town Council meeting, we'll be asking to put that on the agenda. We voted, uh, to, um, eventually make a motion, uh, to put, to move to a consent agenda. Um, the Committee on Committees, um, also met, uh, and in the packet, um, there is one appointment and two reappointments, uh, unless people, uh, would like me to read them all separately, I will read them all together if that's agreeable.
Why don't you read it all together, and then you'll see the voting vote on the first.
Uh, so, um, the Committee on Committees, uh, voted, uh, to recommend the appointment of Lori Travado to the Agricultural, excuse me, the Agriculture Committee as an alternate for a term ending October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And we also, um, voted to recommend the reappointments of Sheldon Dyer, Anna, Anna Patel, Howard, Ray Felsen, Ann Rash, and David Palmer to the Recreation Advisory Committee for terms ending August first, twenty twenty-three. And finally, we voted, um, to recommend the reappointment of Nancy Traddick Smith and Martina Wharton to the Commission on Aging for terms ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, this would be a motion from Committee on Committees. It doesn't need a second. Does anybody object to voting, um, these recommendations as a... With no objection, I will take a vote. Is there anybody who wishes to... Is there anybody who wishes to vote in opposition to the nomination? Definitely has a lot of noise going on. I don't, I don't know who it is aware. Oh, that's better. Um, is there anybody who wishes to vote in opposition to these nominations? Thank you. These, these candidates have been appointed to their various boards and commissions unanimously. Um, Finance Committee?
Mayor?
And Mr....
Excuse me.
Mr. Lyman?
Yes, uh, since Council of Board of Lot went directly from the Personnel Committee report to the Committee on Committees report, I, I wanted to give a minority report from the Personnel Committee. I, I did attend it, but I felt forced to leave after about eight or ten minutes because I was not being allowed to speak. I, I gave a little information during reports and comments of council members earlier, but, uh, you know, when you're at a meeting and you're called upon to pick something on the agenda, and somebody in the chair tells you, well, you know, what are you going to do? Ask a question of staff, but you can't comment on the item on the agenda. When I tried to do so, I was ruled out of order, in which case I figured my presence was not wanted, uh, I mean, the committee was not wanted, and I felt I had to leave because to not leave would have been totally undignified, uh, to remain under those circumstances. I will say this, um, I wish I had been able to stay and, and contribute my comments. I did submit a statement to the committee. Uh, I have asked, uh, to, to, um, Mr. Ail's work, that Noel included as a communication to the, um, Personnel Committee, uh, as a, as a communication to the next regular meeting of the, of the Personnel Committee. And I've, um, also asked, uh, the Assistant Town Manager, Taka Smith, who included as a communication to the council, um, at the next regular meeting of the Town Council. So I asked that for Mr. Ail's work, and I'm, uh, hope that'll, we'll see, we'll see that. I don't know what will come of this consent agenda. I think it would have been informative to have a real discussion on it. Uh, you've seen my ideas, which I want to share with you and with the public, that if we have a consent agenda, which I opposed, uh, which I opposed because I think it just is going, I, I suspect that it'll be, might be used to, to keep, um, especially minority members from debating things and having amendments and votes, so I just don't like the whole idea. But I did say in my, my contribution to the committee and to the council that I hope we'll, we'll expect to see in the next packets, is that if you insist on having a consent agenda, let's codify the, the guarantees or the promises made in the literature that was supplied that said if any member wants something taken out of a consent agenda for any reason, it should be done. I, I just want to see that put in to the, uh, Town Council Rules of Procedure, so it's codified, that it won't be up to the whim, so to speak, of the moderator of, of the, of the Town Council meeting. And I also want, if we're opening it up, if we're opening up the Town Council Rules of Procedure, I'd also like to see, uh, in, in my recommendation, I put that in, that there be some recourse to people at a meeting who are accused of being under chorus, uh, Rule Five, as we have it in our Rules of Procedure. People, uh, people shouldn't be allowed to disclose accusations around saying you're making a personal attack, or that you're doing is questioning the person's performance, job performance. That's part of the oversight function of the legislative body. So I, that accusation has been thrown around a little too often, and I'd like to have a, you know, due recourse. That's a, that's a preset of our system, is that you have recourse to a grievance. If you're accused of shoplifting, you know, or something, you should, after a while, you have to have a way of confronting an accuser and say, "Look, can you bring evidence? Can I refute it?" Or, or not. Otherwise, just throwing out accusations is not, is not good, and it's not healthy, and it's not, I don't think it's proper, uh, unless you can really back it up and have proof. And finally, I've, I've really always resented the rule that was enacted in March of twenty eighteen by the previous mayor and the vote of the majority of the public.
Mr. Frattoni, I don't believe any of this stuff is to be for us now. There is... There is, we will have a report on the actions of the Personnel Committee at a later date. I really don't think, it's almost, it's 9:30, and I would really like to get through tonight's meeting, if you know how long...
Understood, Mayor. I'll wrap it up in one sentence. That other recommendation was, give equal time to each party, like they do in the House of Representatives in Washington, without regard to how many members, you know, who has more higher percentage of members from each party, they're given an equal time for debate, and they can divvy it up within each party any way they want. That was the third one. Final one, I hope that'll be incorporated if changes to the Rules of Procedure, otherwise I'll have to do it, try to do it in the form of an amendment. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity, that's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Katzerberg, Finance Committee.
No, we, well, we have not met since the last meeting, we will have a meeting shortly.
Thank you. Part Mental Advisory Committee reports, has anybody looked at some, have any comments on them? You know, I'm beginning to wonder whether this ought to be on our agenda, because I don't believe anybody looks at these anymore, but we, at some point, we need to think about this. Petitions, requests, and communications. And you'll see there, the municipal letter to Governor Lamont regarding the tiered pilots that I discussed in my report and comments earlier, where I'm one of about 36 signatories. Any questions on reports and comments, or any comments on reports and comments? All right. Future agendas. Mr. Shaken, following Mr. Freudman.
Thank you, Mayor. You may recall, after the election, I asked for an item to be placed on our agenda regarding the Mansfield Code of Ordinances, silence on possession of firearms on municipal property. Our ordinances allow, prohibit, excuse me, firearms in town parks and trails that are silent, and therefore, the waffle carry of firearms is allowed within Town Hall and other municipal facilities that aren't schools. This came up, obviously, during the election when there were statewide concerns, nationwide concerns about potential violence at the halls, thankfully, those didn't materialize and arose again as we considered the prospect of an armed protest at Town Hall Sunday yesterday that, by a group whose ethos is to promote the coming of a second civil war. Had it materialized, and again, thankfully, it did not, the carry of firearms on town property would have been legal, and it is up to us as a municipality to determine whether we want that to not be the case. I, my opinion is it shouldn't, and so I'd like to add that to a future agenda for us to amend our code of ordinances to prohibit the possession of firearms on municipal property.
Okay. You already prohibited smoking. So, any other, Mr. Freudman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you may know, I don't think that I or my fellow Republicans on the council have ever asked for an item on future agenda, because we never get it anyway, so we don't ask.
Oh, yes, you have, plenty of times, and you have done. I'm sorry, Mr. Freudman, that's not true.
I do stand corrected, I think I've done it through email to the mayor, whether it was yourself or your predecessor.
Over the years, you, plenty of times, people have made requests from both parties, and have both parties pressed and been granted, so what is your request?
I hope you'll remind me someday what those were when they were, we could get it...
Let's get to your request.
That's okay, I'll get to my point. One, what I would ask the mayor for future agenda is, there's an item that usually comes at the beginning of a term, but it can come anytime, you know, is appointment to council committees or standing committees. That is a duty, a privilege, done solely by the mayor, who, which council member is put on which committee, and which one of those will be the chair. I really hope the mayor will consider appointing Mr. Sherin to be chair. I'd just like to give a tiny background, I know this is not the place to debate it. I had the pleasure, and I say pleasure, of being on the Committee on Committees when Deputy Mayor Shaken chaired it. Now, he and I don't agree on much. I never knew if I'd made a suggestion whether he agreed or not, never interrupted, never showed any resentment, didn't tell me, well, you can't ask this, you can't ask that. Sometimes I wouldn't know how he felt about it until they had some true proof.
Mr. Frithlot, your request is that we revisit the composition of the committees and the future agenda, particularly the chairs.
I just want people to understand why I'm asking you. The situation in that committee, unacceptable, unacceptable.
You have been very clear on your concern. Mr. Sherin, did you have a comment?
No, I have no comment.
All right. We will discuss this and consider it for a future agenda. Is there any other, are there any other requests for future agendas? All right, the next item on our agenda is a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
I put forth a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Shaken, seconded by Mr. Osberger. All right. All those in favor, go home, or turn off your screens or something. Thank you. Good night.
Aye, well, aye.
Thank you.